I'd like to bring this meeting to order tonight. I want to thank all of our guests being in attendance. I want to thank Mr. Cleopold Bryan Haskins, being in attendance, and Mr. Haymore, being in attendance tonight. This is Tuesday, October 15th, 2019. This is our regular normal business meeting. This is the General District Courtroom at Edward R. Shields Courthouse Edition, Chatham, Chatham. Roll call.
Mr. Farmer.
Here.
Mr. Blackstock.
Present.
Mr. Farmer.
Here.
Mr. Scares.
Here.
Mr. Warren.
Here.
Dr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Davis.
Present. Now, those that will, just have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. For those who can stand, we pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do we have any items to be added to the agenda? If there are none, have a most full approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Mr. Blackstock makes the motion. All right, we'll give a second. Do we have any discussion? All right, hearing none.
I would like to thank all the votes roll call tonight. Mr. Farmer.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Farmer.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Dr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Davis. Yes. I think we're moving on to item eight, are we not, Councilman? It is.
Seven.
Oh, seven, okay. Pardon me.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in the pack.
Thank you. Mr. Blackstock made the motion. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Thank you. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none.
Mr. Farmer.
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes.
Mr. Farmer.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Dr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes. Passing them down to the floor. Moving on to item eight, presentations, I would appreciate all the board members meeting me down in the hall, please.
I just have a few words before we get rolling here, and I just wanted to tell you how this got started. I was at a doctor's appointment, and the day nurse was still on my vitals, and she mentioned that her father had 55 years on the volunteer fire department here in Chatham. And I said, so why ought to recognize that? That's an important accomplishment. So I talked to Mr. Slimp, and that was early in the year. And here we are today, and we have this big group coming in for all the years of service. And I just want to make sure you guys understand how important your job is to the county. I think every person on this board appreciates everything you guys do, and this little bit of an accolade for you to show that we appreciate that support. I hope you appreciate that, and I hope we do this more often. I don't think we ought to wait 55 years down the road to show the appreciation of what you guys do for the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Scares. Folks, this is a great night. It's a very special night, and we want to recognize some folks that have sacrificed and dedicated much of their life to the betterment of Pennsylvania County to people that they may never have even known, and probably in some cases, their family and their friends they've helped. And I came from an apartment, the fire chief, we were very similar situation, the fire chief used to always say, "We're standing on the shoulders of giants." And that's very, very true, because some of these folks are giants for what they've done in all the years, and they've put into this, and the sacrifices they've made. And people don't realize when you volunteer for a fire department, it's not like any other civic organization. It functions 24/7. It's not where you just go out to, you know, a club dinner, or maybe you do something on Saturdays, or you pick up trash and, you know, make the roadway better. I mean, all those things are important, but these agencies have to operate 24/7. And people don't realize the sacrifice that takes. It is truly another job for these folks to do, and sometimes it's very thankless. And I can tell you, when you're out there at 3:00 in the morning, and the snow's falling, and you're freezing the tail off, and, you know, there's a lot of other places you'd rather be, or when you're out alongside the road dealing with a drunk who's had a wreck, and you're trying to keep from getting run over while you're out there, there's a lot of places you'd rather be. But you still do it, and you do it for the right reasons. And I'm very passionate about that. That's how I started, and, you know, that's how I'll finish one day. So with that, we'll go ahead and start. For the folks that have between 40 and 50 years, or 40, 49 years, we have a certificate for you, and when you call your name, if you come up and kind of go down the row here and shake everybody's hand. And for those of you who have 50 and more, we have a little different presentation for you tonight, okay? So with that, I'll start Roger Burnett. Jimmy Hollis.
Chris Taylor wasn't far with the front.
I knew Mike Neal was going to get his two cents in for that. The banner of the Neal brothers, Barry Neal.
My oldest brother, good man, come on.
And Barry's also a retired firefighter from the city of Davenport as well. Spent...
How many years down there?
32 years down there as well. It's in the blood after a while, I think. Jerry Martin. David Burgess. Carl Adams with Rice Padova. Jerry Mosier with Rice Padova.
This is for UZ.
Franklin Crowder Senior with Rice Padova. Terry Kelly with Chatham Fire Department. Terry's also one of our fire marshals in the county. You might see him out and about once in a while, and he also works for folks. Thank you for being a fire marshal.
I wasn't born when Terry was volunteering.
Howard Amos with Callens Fire Department. I don't think I've seen him. He's probably here. Okay. Kermit King Senior with Callens. Jesse Yanks, I know Jesse couldn't be here tonight. I talked to him earlier today. Jesse's with Gretna, now Gretna, Fire and Rescue, and I'll tell you a little just something good about Jesse. He runs calls constantly, but he was a big person in the merger of Gretna Fire and Rescue and really helped turn that rescue squad, what was going on there around. So if he was here, I'd have to give him extra credit on the back for what he did. Robbie Barker with Kentuck. Dennis Golds. Next, we're going to recognize those who have 50 years or more, and I'd like to just read this. This is a resolution of appreciation that will be given him tonight. It says, "Pittsburgh County Board of Supervisors Resolution, Fire and Rescue Volunteer Appreciation. At the business meeting of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors on October 15th, 2019, in the General District Courtroom of Edward R. Shields Courthouse Edition, following resolution was presented and adopted. Whereas volunteers give their time effortlessly without expecting anything in return, and whereas these volunteers have spent 50 years or more volunteering with their local fire and rescue department throughout Pennsylvania County, Virginia. Whereas their countless hours of volunteerism have helped provide guidance and assistance in moments where seconds matter, and their selfless devotion of personal time and resources have helped to maximize the quality of life for those in their community. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Pennsylvania County express their sincere appreciation to these volunteers for the noble dedication of their time towards fire and rescue within the county. And be it furthermore resolved that a copy of the resolution will be presented to the volunteers on behalf of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors, given under my hand this 15th day of October, 2019, W. Davis Chairman." So with that, the very first one is Mike Neal. We actually have whites wearing something besides sweats and shorts, and I'm impressed. You can't sell any stink boots or anything else up here.
I do have a Stew's there. Thank you.
Also with Ringo is Billy Demont. He should deserve something Mexican rather than come up here with heat.
Chris, on a more serious note, this man, he had three to four weeks ago in this brother hospital, major cut and cancer surgery. He actually ceded for several minutes, but the fifth lady got him back in good little wheel. He's with us.
With Rice Field Java, Carol Jennings.
I'd like to add, that is the founder of Rice Padova. Right, folks?
Waiting for the speech. With Chatham Fire Department, Bobby Campbell. We have one member who could not be here tonight, but Chatham Fire was a man's proportion. Don't think the gentleman, the folks from Hurt could make it tonight. I talked to the chief a little earlier today, but with Hurt, we have several who have 50 years. The first one is Paul Davis. Russell Morris. Gary Boss. And Rock Colen. Nice to hear that. Mr. Haymore. Also with Mount Urban Fire Department is Jerome Cook. With Kentuck Fire Department, I have John Collin. If I could all y'all one more time back up here, we'll get a quick photo here. Thank you, Mr. Kent.
I love him.
That's ring my play.
All right, here we go. Everybody ready? Wait a minute. Chris, if you and Mike can make it.
Oh, definitely.
All right.
Get Mike's jockers.
All right, here we go. Ready, one, two, three?
I donate.
Put that head back to Ringo, catch some pin. Close signature, please.
Tell him that, I say.
Blocking the camera, come on.
Broke the camera.
We also want to thank our scalps for being able to make a good contribution with the scalpel, who have outstanding job, got this early on. Our next, my only agenda, the census presentation. Mr. Sykes.
Mr. Chairman, I have had the pleasure of hearing a presentation by Ms. Valerie Warner. She is with the U.S. Census Bureau, and I thought that it would be good to have her present tonight to give a general overview of the upcoming census and talk about how important it is to our community as well as the country. So this is Ms. Valerie Warner.
Good evening, and thank you so much for having me. As Mr. Sykes said, I am with the U.S. Census Bureau. My title is partnership specialist, and what I do is I go around and talk to local government, community groups, churches, and just about anybody to let them know how important the 2020 census is. And so tonight, I won't be before long, but I have some important information about this census. First of all, the goal of the 2020 census is to count every person, count them once, and in the right place. The census is mandated by Constitution, Article One, Section Two, and the data from it is used to apportion seats in the House of Representatives to conduct redistricting at federal, state, and local levels, and also to distribute over $675 billion to state and local governments. The purpose of the census is to conduct a census of the population housing and to disseminate that information to the president, the states, and the American people. The data from the census is strictly confidential. I'm going to skip over, because this is an important thing, and what people ask me about mostly is the confidentiality aspect of the census. All information that's collected under authority of Section Nine, Title Twelve, the U.S. Code is strictly confidential. It requires individuals to respond, but also guarantees their confidentiality. Now, census workers must pass the security check, and we are sworn to uphold a pledge not to reveal any information, personally identifiable information, and we are under a penalty for violating that for a fine of $250,000 for a violation in jail. So the census is safe. No information, no personally identifiable information is ever released except after 72 years. What is released is the aggregate information numbers, for example, and data is released to the president and to agencies. But your name, your social security number, or your birthday is not released until after 72 years. Census data, how is it used? Local government officials can use census data to ensure public safety, plan for new schools and hospitals. They also, real estate developers can use it to determine where to build houses or where the population shift is. So that data is used for many things. Here is another example of how census data is used. It's used for SNAP, rent, housing, transportation, and roads, hospitals, schools, and just a myriad of information, even nonprofits, when they apply for grants, they use census data. And a lot of times, if the numbers don't match what they put in because people don't respond to the census, then funds are not given. So that's another important reason that we need to consider having a complete count in Pennsylvania County. What does all this means for Pennsylvania County? What it means that for every person who does not respond to the census, the county will lose $2,000 in federal funds over the course of 10 years. So that's a significant loss in funding, especially when you need new schools, new roads, and other facilities throughout the county. There are some, we'll start with undercounty groups, and this is why we are out, because there are a lot of groups that just don't respond to the census or don't understand how important it is to respond to the census. And those groups include children under five, immigrants, the age group 18 to 24, persons with a disability, veterans, seniors, and non-English speakers. So we have a tool on the census website, it's called ROAM, R-O-A-M. It's Response Outreach Area Mapers. This is a picture of Census Track 105 in Pennsylvania County, and it has some information about it. And what that information shows is that the low response rate is 21.8%. So that's a significant loss of funds to the county just from district to the census track. The next census track is 107, which has a 20.4% low response rate. And similarly, Track 114 has a 20.8% low response count. So what we're doing out here is we are trying to talk to people in those areas, and if you go to, let me go back. ROAM is a tool on the website. If you go to www.sensus.gov/roam, a Dropbox will come down where you can put any address, say you could put Pennsylvania County, and it will show you what your county looks like with regard to response. The dark blue areas are the lower response areas, and that's why we are working to eliminate that. Now, what the low response predicts is male return rate, total population, household median income, percentage of population under five, percentage of population over 65, percentage below poverty level, race data, and language data. You can get all that information from ROAM. One of the tools that the Census Department recommends to address low response rate is called a Complete Count Committee. And what that is, is a volunteer committee that's established by the local government or the regional government. And because you're local and people understand you and they trust you, they will enact to take your word when you say how important it is to respond to the census. The Census Bureau asks governments and organizations to set up CCCs, it's impievable, and this CCC addresses a broad range of community interests and will play a major role in conducting census outreach and promotion activities in the community. The purpose of the Complete Count Committee is to... The census, the purpose of the Complete Count Committee is to educate, promote, and motivate. And this is what a sample Complete Count Committee looks like. It just contains a group of people throughout the city, I mean, throughout this county in this case, which would include governments, public schools, community organizations, faith-based groups. These are the people that, this is the group that people in the county look to for guidance when they have issues like whether or not it's safe to respond to the census. When should a CCC organize? Well, it's past time, actually, for our area. Considering that we have low response rates in several census tracks, it's important to get started now where it's less than six months before the census actually starts to start working to get people to understand how important it is to respond to the census. One of the things, this is a new design. The 2020 census will be a new design because, for the first time, citizens will be able to respond on the internet, over the phone, or by mail. So the traditional census takers, as you know, that used to go out from house to house, they will only go out if people don't respond in one of those three ways. So the census is right around the corner. It's important to prepare now by identifying resources for census promotion, coordinating with groups, former CCC, and you have people throughout the area, partnership specialists, and others. Right here in the county, I'm in the Amo. We have someone in Franklin, Brawn, just right here who can help you all get the word out about the census. And one of the other, this is a list of census resources. Like I said, we have ROAM. We have partnership information on the website. We have government resources. And we often have resources for citizens, community groups, and other agencies on the website. And if you are interested in any of those, you can either contact me. I have the info. I think I left my information. And also, lastly, I wanted to let you know that the Census Bureau is hiring. The Census Bureau is doing an unprecedented hiring throughout the county. We need a large group of people. We have just finished, I have just canvassing, which means that identify what houses that people live in. But because of the areas that we live in, how spread out people are, they are going to need census takers. So the census is hiring. They've been hiring. They will be hiring through 2020. And it's a great job with benefits, and not benefits, I'm sorry, but in addition to the great pay, you also get mileage, which is 58 cents a mile, and also you can work hours at your own discretion. So I have just some information about how you can become a racist as a partner. And if you have any questions, I would be glad to answer them. And thank you so much for having me. Census hiring here. Thank you.
Moving on to item nine, Hearing of the Citizens. Each person addressing the board on Hearing of the Citizens shall be a resident and landowner of the county or registered agents of such resident or landowner. Each person shall step up, give his or her name, district, in an awful tone of voice, or the record. Unless first time is granted by the chairman, shall limited or addressed for three minutes. A person shall be permitted to address the board more than once during Hearing of the Citizens. All remarks shall be addressed to the board as a body and not to any individual member thereof. Hearing of the citizens shall last a maximum of 45 minutes. Any individual that has signed up to speak during said section does not get the opportunity to do so because of aforementioned time limits shall be given speaking priority at the next board meeting. After the chairman has approved, no person shall be able to speak who is not signed up. Public hearings, rezoning, public hearings. Oh, we did? I didn't have any paperwork up here. Oh, okay. So we do have one signed up. Pardon me, I did not know the most honorable Brian Haskins, prosecuting attorney for Pitts Lane County.
Can't hear you three minutes. Sir, you said it was long. Everybody has things to do tonight. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm here tonight to have the pleasure to describe to you why we have so many future leaders in our community here with us tonight. I'm here as a merit badge counselor who's volunteering with some of our local young men. Boy Scouts is the premier young men's character development and leadership training organization in the United States. And if you're looking at future community leaders here tonight, one of the values that Scout teaches that places a paramount importance is good citizenship. In fact, it is such a held in high regard of the 21 merit badges that Scouts have to earn amongst many other things to achieve the highest rank of Eagle Scout. Three of those are citizenship merit badges. One is citizenship in the world, one is citizenship in the nation, and one is citizenship in the community. These young men here represent three different troops that are local. Troops 372, 374, and 377. They have come together to work on their citizenship in the community merit badge. One of those requirements is to come to a local meeting of a boy supervisor or city council to observe how the government works and learn their proper role in that government. So they are here tonight to learn from you. And I would encourage you to thank them for being here tonight, for showing their citizenship. And I promise you that when you are ready to pass the torch on to the next generation, Scout is going to make sure these young men are ready to pick it up and go with them. So that's why I'm here.
I'm going to do something different. No, it's not on the itinerary. I'm the chair. Remember that. I'd like for all your scouts and your scout leaders to stand, please. Hold it. Oh, yeah. Good-looking crowd. I'm going to round to a scout. Thank you for your dedication and what you guys do and keeping the torch burning. And I do appreciate the Scout masters and your patience very, very much. Thank you. You may be seated. I do agree with the council. They are the future. One of them days, you may have this seat. Thank the Lord. I believe I can move on, Colonel.
Amen.
Public hearings, rezoning, public hearings. Pursuit to Article 5, Division 6 of Pitts Lane County zoning ordinance. The board of supervisors have been empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issues and zoning map changes in support of said ordinance. In a conscious disapproval passed, the board is responsible for promoting the health, safety, and general public welfare of the citizens of Pitts Lane County. The board must ensure that all of its decisions and regulations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, comprehensive plan, and in the best interest of Pitts Lane County, its citizens, and its posterity. Case number one, public hearing, rezoning case R-19-028. Mr. Sides.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. You may open the public hearing for this case.
I open this public hearing up at 7:38 PM.
Thank you. In case R-19-028, Victoria M. Truitt has petitioned to rezone 0.861 of an acre located on State Road 844, Mount Cross Road, in the Tunstall Election District from RC 1 Residential Combined Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to combine with the adjacent farm. Planning Commission recommended by unanimous vote with no opposition that petition's request be granted. Once the property is rezoned to A1, then all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. Staff members enclosing, your board packet, and Mr. Chairman. Ms. Truitt is here to represent the petition.
Ms. Truitt.
My name is Victoria M. Truitt. I grew up here. I went to school here. And I sell on my farm, shrinking the residential lot and increasing a little bit of the pasture land. And I appreciate your approval.
Taking Ms. Truitt. You seated.
Mr. Chairman, we have no one else signed up for this case, so you may close it up.
Public hearing is at 7:45 PM.
Mr. Chairman, case R-19-028, I'd like to make a motion to rezone this property RC 1 to A1.
Motion made by Mr. Barbara. Got a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Blackstock. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Mr. Barbara?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Carriage unanimously. Ms. Truitt, your property has been rezoned, ma'am. Thank you. You can stay or you can leave. It's up to you and your discretion. But we want everyone to know that cases that have been rezoned, you have the privilege to stay or you can leave. Thank you so kindly. Case number two, public hearing, rezoning case R-19-029. Mr. Sides.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. You may open the public hearing for this case.
Open this public hearing up at 7:41 PM.
Thank you. In case R-19-029, Robin Taylor has petitioned to rezone 21.41 acres located on State Road 626, Smith Mountain Road, in the Callings-Gretn election district from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District for agricultural purposes and replacement of a single-wide mobile home and cabin. The planning commission recommended by unanimous vote with no opposition that petition's request be granted. Once the property is rezoned to A1, then all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. Staff members enclosing, your packet, and Mr. Chairman, Ms. Robin Taylor is here to represent the petition.
Yes. Ms. Taylor.
I'm Robin Taylor.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have no one else signed up for this case, so you may close it up.
Close this public hearing at 7:42 PM.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on case R-19-029 that we rezone 21.41 acres from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Farmer. Second. Second by Mr. Barbara. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Dr. Miller? Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor, your property has been rezoned.
Thank you, sir.
Case number three, rezoning case R-19-030. Mr. Sides.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. You may open the public hearing for this case.
Open this public hearing up at 7:43.
Case R-19-030, calling all this, petition to rezone 0.861 acres located on Highway 41, Franklin Turnpike, in the Chattildales election district from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to V2 Business District General for future commercial development. Planning Commission recommended by unanimous vote with opposition that petition's request be granted. Once the property is rezoned to V2, then all uses listed under Section 35-365 are permitted. Staff members enclosing, your packet, and Mr. Chairman, Ms. Colleen, all this is here to represent the petition.
Office.
Yes, I'm calling all this.
Anything you'd like to add?
No, thank you very much.
Okay. You may be seated for right now.
Mr. Chairman, we have no one else signed up to speak on this case, so we close it up.
So I close this public hearing at 7:44 PM. Mr. Warren?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that we approve the rezoning of case number R-19-030.
Motion second. Second by Dr. Miller. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. So all of your property has been rezoned. Moving on to case number four, rezoning case R-19-031. Mr. Sides.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. You may open the public hearing for this case.
Open this public hearing up at 7:45 PM.
Case R-19-031, Craig and Kristen Worsham have petitioned to rezone 5 acres located off Cherrystone Road on Kendall Court in the Chattildales election district from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District for agricultural uses specifically the housing of horses in a dwelling barn structure. Planning Commission recommended by unanimous vote with opposition that petition's request be granted with the property submitted as follows. No manufactured housing permitted and no intended livestock, including swine, dairy, or poultry as defined in the zoning ordinance, Section 35-189.2. Once the property is rezoned to A1, with the exception of the property, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. Staff members enclosing, your board packet, and Mr. Chairman, Ms. Kristen Worsham is here to represent the petition.
I open this public hearing up at 7:46 PM.
Thank you. Good evening. I am Kristen Worsham. And quite a lot of detail was provided in the October 1st planning commission meeting. And as you know, it was a unanimous decision, and it was based on quite a lot of facts. There was opposition. There are people here in the room tonight who signed up to speak who were actually for us, who were unable to attend previously, or unable to state all they wish to state in that meeting. I just want to just say one thing very briefly, and that is that my husband and I, we do reside at 432 Cherrystone. We're residents. We're longtime residents. We purchased this property. We know that it will become an asset to the community. That's our intent. And of course, it's under construction, so it will improve as time goes on to that end. So we respectfully ask that you approve our petition to rezone. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Worsham.
Chairman, we have Tori sign to speak in this case tonight. First is Claire Worsham.
Our request to pass.
Second person signing to speak is Jeffrey D. Connor, out of Iowa. And the third speaker is Mary Beth Rogers.
The con.
So, Mr. Chairman, we have no one else signed up to speak to this case.
I'm surprised that young man, good year. This is the first time he's up and climbed the street. Anyway, good to see you. I'd like to close this public hearing at 7:48. Listening to his wife. Mr. Warren?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move that we approve the rezoning case number R-19-031 for Craig and Kristen Worsham and their beautiful daughter.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Warren? Second by Dr., I mean, Mr., Dr. Blackstock?
Can we just make sure that with the motion that we had, with the proppers, as stated?
With the proppers, as stated.
Thank you for paying attention tonight, counsel. I appreciate that. I thought I was going to call Mr. Haskins. But anyway, with the proppers, that was a motion. We need to go back through that.
Just to admit this.
Are you going to admit the second?
I did the motion to include it as presented with proppers as recommended by Assistant County Administrator, Mr. Gregson.
Second.
Second. All right, so we have that. Is any further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I just feel like I would be remiss if I didn't compliment the Worsham family. I had the opportunity to, one, attend the planning commission. But prior to that meeting, I met with Ms. Worsham and her daughter at the property. They have done an outstanding job, and it's going to be a beautiful facility. I've marked it that if Tammy throws me out, I'm going to see if I can rent it. But I also was amazed by the conversation and what I've seen from a number of citizens that are here tonight to speak positively about this, that the Worshams have... But I also was amazed by the conversation and what I've seen from a number of citizens that are here tonight to speak positively about this, that the Worshams have tried diligently to do the right thing and work within the parameters of that. As I talked with Ms. Worsham, you know, she could have done what she ultimately was trying to do and stayed within R one and I said, why are you jumping through all these hurdles and, uh, to do this? And she indicated to me about concerns from just a very minimal number of folks around there and, uh, that it gave her pause that she would have troubles later if she didn't make this change. I, I kind of scratched my head on that, uh, but as I watched some things unfold during the planning commission and following the planning commission, Ms. Worsham, I completely understand and, uh, agree with you that you have to be careful. I would ask that you would continue to keep the attitude that you've had all along you and your family and your willingness to work with, in particular, those residents that are right around it, to meet each other's concerns and, and be good neighbors as I'm sure you will. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Ms. Worsham, property has been rezoned, thank you. Item B, are we correct, counsel?
Uh, yes.
Each person addressing the board under the public hearing, so step up, give his or her name and district and his or her place of residence and for non-county citizens in an autonomous voice for the record, and unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall leave his or her address for three minutes. Speakers for small groups shall be limited, limited to ten minutes. Speaker shall include their remarks or conclude their remarks at that time unless consent of the board is affirmatively given to extend the speaker a lot of time after the chairman's approval. No person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. Public hearing amendment to P C C six dash three, uh, county tax exemption. Mr. J. Bayman Esquire.
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is our old friend, as we're here today. Again, we've been working on this, it seems like almost a year. But, uh, tonight, we have a public hearing following the, uh, unanimous recommendation of the legislative committee and the board at a previous work session. We have a public hearing for proposed changes to Pennsylvania County Code section six dash three point one. It deals with expanding our local county tax exemptions to mirror the new, um, changes in the expanded form to Virginia Code section fifty-eight one one thirty-five oh five. As you recall, this will expand tax exemptions for some of our local industries, primarily the nurseries. Um, we have vetted this ad nauseam and, um, we have advertised it to the Chatham Star Tribune and, um, I follow the public hearing. I'm available to answer any questions. No one has signed up to the public hearing, so I ask you to open the public hearing and then close it, and then it's for potential action for the board.
Open this public hearing up at seven fifty-three P M. No one has signed up to, can close the public hearing, can't. I close this public hearing at seven fifty-three P M.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt revisions in Pennsylvania County Code six dash three point one as presented.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, second by Mr. Palmer, thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We're always quick to hear about times that we raise taxes. Just make sure the public understand we're actually reducing taxes tonight. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none?
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes. Motion carries, motion carries, number two, public hearing amendment to the P C C thirty-five dash one twenty-two, commercial kennel, veterinary and animal hospital, special use permit. Sides.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have the section in our current zoning ordinance referencing commercial kennels, veterinary and animal hospitals. And it, it has defined stipulated distances for setbacks from property lines, from residential properties, from adjacent dwellings. And it's come up several times with Pennsylvania County that it, it is a, a rigid structure that doesn't allow for the flexibility to take into account that in some cases you may be dealing in a residential area, some places a completely agricultural area. So staff recommended to the Pennsylvania County Planning Commission that we revise that section and take out the rigid stipulation guideline and just say that for those uses in the various districts A one, B one, uh, D two, M one and M two, that commercial kennels, veterinary hospitals be regulated as, with a special use permit. So the proposal tonight is to amend our ordinance to allow the special use permit for these uses under these particular guidance, uh, sections. Now keep in mind, I call the attention of the board that by being a special use permit, that means if someone comes in to do a project of this nature, it will have to go before the planning commission for a public hearing, so the citizens and the neighbors, residents, they have a chance to speak up. And then it will be recommended to the Board of Zoning Appeals that we'll have a second public hearing. So there'd be more than ample opportunity to consider whether setbacks need to be provided to residents or not based on surroundings. So the proposed amendment unanimously passed the planning commission and the second step in the process is for the board supervisor, the board planning committee, coming to hold a public hearing tonight before you recommend the change. So it would be in order to open a public hearing at this time.
All right, open up this public hearing at seven fifty-six P M.
And, Mr. Chairman, we have no one, uh, signed up on our sign up sheet to speak for this topic.
I close this public hearing at seven fifty-six P M. All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, uh, ask a resolution that we amend P C C thirty-five dash one twenty-five. Any further changes?
Motion made by Mr. Scares, uh, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Palmer, thank you. Further discussion?
Greg, don't we need to amend more than just that one section?
Yes, if, uh, if we could read the entire motion, it would, it would be more clear.
I tell him page one sixty-one hundred, Pat.
Do we have to amend the motion?
Uh, he just needs to.
Don't he just need to read the whole line of things?
He just needs to read where it says motion on page one sixty-one, yeah.
We don't have it.
You don't have it up, you have it?
I get, I get smooth pitch.
I think I got it right now. I got it. Okay, I make a motion to amend P C C thirty-five dash one two two, commercial kennel, veterinary, animal hospital, P C C thirty-five dash one seventy-nine, A one special use permits and P C C thirty-five dash thirty, excuse me, three forty-seven, B one special use permit as presented.
Second. Motion by Mr. Scares, the second by Mr. Palmer. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say this, this came up with an issue in my district of the Mount Herman Animal Clinic would like to expand and with the, uh, what we have with the current code, it was, they would not be able to expand. There's a property beside them, a B one zone property that they can expand that business and provide a better, uh, facility. So to me, it was critical that we get this, uh, changed and I appreciate the staff, the hard work they did. It did take a little bit of time, but they, we got it accounted, so I appreciate their work.
Any further discussion? Thank you. Hearing none?
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Item eleven, we have any unfinished business?
No, sir.
Okay, twelve, new business award of R F P for outreach program and electronic monitoring services for J and D Corp, Miss Kimberly G. Van De Heij.
Yes, the county J and D Corp services unit has an outreach program that provides supervision and intervention for youth of all of court. The goals of outreach and electronic monitoring programs are to reduce the number of new law violations while late awaiting trial, to reduce the need for security, other out of home places, to ensure court appearances for juveniles and the program by providing close monitoring, crisis intervention and referral for services. The county's purchasing department issued a request for proposal R F P for these services. The R F P was advertised on the county's website as well as the Virginia Business Opportunities website and the state's Public Procurement Board. The county received two proposals to the related R F P. The county's evaluation committee ranked Youth Connect of Virginia as the top scoring vendor and recommended award of the contract to that company. Funds for this program have already been budgeted in the F R twenty twenty budget, um, and they are grant funds. So county staff does recommend the award of the contract to Youth Connect of Virginia.
Thank you, Ms. Van De Heij.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I should make a motion that we approve.
Hold on a moment, Mr. Warren. If you second, if Mr. Barber made the motion, he got you just about a hair. Mr. Barber makes a motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Warren. Thank you, Ms. Van De Heij. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none?
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes. Motion carries. And the thirty appointments, do we have any appointments tonight?
No, sir.
Matters from the work session, if any authorization to begin design of future solid place, convenience centers. Mr. Hicks?
Yes, sir, you have a little packet, a copy of a proposed contract amendment for S C S engineers to begin the design of free, uh, additional convenience centers. Uh, we also gave you information that you'd like to move forward on some modification to the Mount Herman Convenience Center and also the Sett Mountain Lake Convenience Center and also begin exploring the option of obtaining additional property for the Boppin Convenience Center. And the bring up seven twenty-nine, convenience center, so we're asking for the board's authorization to move forward. Come on, on, on one of those items, I see.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hicks.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we move forward with the items presented in the work session today, the state government, Mr. Hicks, all right?
Second. Motion made by, by Mr. Blackstock, second by Mr. Warren, thank you. We have any further discussion? All right, hearing none?
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Good.
Mr. Davis?
Yes. Motion carries. Board member reports, item fifteen, Mr. Barber.
Uh, just like to say, in reference, I'd like to say that young future leaders of the county, then see those retirement, been in there fifty years, those both, that that was really neat, see, everybody can contribute to the county to make it what it is.
Thank you, Mr. Barber.
Um, certainly my earlier night that Dennis Carter, resident of Pennsylvania County, who was been a, uh, sports newscaster on W S E T channel thirteen is retiring after many, many years and I know, uh, our county's been very proud of Dennis. He, uh, was one of the people that were really, really adamant about Friday football and reporting, uh, us who were fans of, of football, myself being the brat in the Hawks. I always, uh, try to get there at eleven o'clock and watch the news to see what my Hawks did. So we congratulate Dennis on his retirement and, uh, I don't know, maybe we can get him before the board after his retirement, but, uh, I thought that was kind of neat.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, um, I'd like to let everyone know this past weekend, I had the pleasure of speaking at the Leesville Lake Association, uh, membership banquet and, uh, I'd like to give Matt Rowe, our economic developer, uh, director, um, a shout out. He accompanied me to that meeting and it was very beneficial. Uh, also remind all of our citizens that this coming Saturday in the town of Greton, we're having our old timers jubilee, so come out and enjoy, um, that. And also, uh, I saw our extension agent, Mr. Stephen Bartz in the crowd. Uh, just to let you know, we did approve that in the consent agenda to thank you for your work on this draft disaster declaration and looking out for our local partners.
Thank you. Dr. Miller?
Yes, sir. Just like to make a comment that I am also appreciative of the fact of our young men, uh, here as boy scouts being here. I have to, uh, definitely believe that the boy scouts are a very valuable organization, um, in our country as well as our local area. And I would also like to say that fifty-five years ago, um, I was a boy scout, um, in troop number two thirty-eight, so.
Mr. Scares?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, only thing I have, uh, River Bend Fire Department is having a fundraiser this weekend, Saturday. They're, they have probably one of the best stews that I've had. Out of all the fire departments, they're one of the best, so, um, you can pick it up before twelve o'clock. I think by twelve o'clock, you have to be there to pick it up, but, uh, if you want some good stew, that's the place to be Saturday. Thank you.
Mr. Warren?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I, I too would like to echo, uh, the same sentiments for our youth being here tonight. Uh, they are our future and our future leaders. We say it real often with the school system and all. And tonight, I'm very proud of all of you all, in particular, one member of the troops that's here that's a member of my church and I've known him since, uh, birth and that's Andrew Cruz and, uh, he's already a leader in our church and our youth programs and all, so I know it's a, a bright future for him and the rest of you young men, so I appreciate it very much. The fire and rescue folks, it was just amazing to me to stand up at night and think about volunteers that have committed fifty-plus years of their lives to service, uh, certainly without any monetary compensation, compensation. You know, I'm sure there's great rewards for them and, and the difference they make in lives, but it's certainly not monetary. Most of them end up spending a lot of money to, to have the option to volunteer, so we really appreciate those. And, uh, on a very serious note, tonight, I have a very, a close friend that is also a member of our I D A board that is going through some major health issues right now. And, uh, I would just ask and humbly request that each and every one of you all tonight and in the future, the rest of this week, continue to remember him in your prayers and his family as they go through this. You've all had to go through them, but, uh, he's a special individual and I just really appreciate that you lift him up tonight in your prayers. And that's Mr. Ronnie Haywood. Thank you.
Once again, I want to thank Mr. Haymore, who does a good job on the planning commission. If you want to look at Bulldog and ask some good questions, Mr. Haymore is one. I appreciate the legacy he's left. And I don't mean that literally, Mr. Haymore, you'll understand. I don't have your college, but anyway, I appreciate what you do and that lovely bride that keeps you in check. I appreciate what she does. And also want to thank the honorable Mr. Brian Haskins for the great job he does in Pennsylvania County towards keeping our public safe, as well as our law enforcement who are always quiet in the back and ready for us to leave. Thank you, guys. Our scouts. I used to be a scout. I used to pay a dime a week for my dude. Imagine that, a dime a week? I could buy a, a mountain dew and a cup full of dime back in the days. And the only thing I just did not like is when we went out on those camping trips, the scout master could call in a crow. He had the voice to do it. He could call a crowhead. How in the world he put me out there holding a bag with a light in it, snipe hunting, and I hear a crow calling over here when it was, uh, I never forget it. I never saw any snipes. I just heard it, but I want to thank you guys for what you do. Once again, the scout masters do a wonderful job. I think they'd like to enjoy, uh, putting us in pain.
do a wonderful job, I think they'd like to enjoy putting us in pain. I want to thank the staff, as usual, because it's a ton of work that you guys will never know about, and they helped me along, the aged one, and I appreciate that. Ms. Vanderheide, I appreciate what you do, Mr. Smithman, Mr. Hunt, Squire, Mr. Sykes, Mr. Hicks, thank you for what you do, sir, Kaylin, thank you, Board Supervisors, I appreciate you guys' work helping me along, the big eye in the skies, Mr. Kevin over here, couldn't do it without him, IT personnel, could not do it without them, the media, thank you. During the meeting, no, pardon me, pardon me, pardon me, I just, I filed up ninety percent, I got ninety percent.
Almost got it perfect.
You guys don't have anything to say, anything, that's correct, you don't have anything to say. County Administrator reports, or us, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am struck by two things that we've done today, and how far we've come in twenty-four months, to think that we'd be talking about improving compactur sites, improving our solid base system, enhancing the experience for our citizens, when two years ago, we didn't even have the funds to basically collect the trash. So we've come a long way in two years on that. Another thing we've come to, very far in two years on, is our fire and rescue system, not only the organization thereof, but our relationship therewith. I think two years ago, we had a truck parked on the side of the street, and the keys turned over.
We don't want to go there.
Okay, we won't go back there. Today, we have a comprehensive system that is organized by a new chapter of our county code, that will soon, next month, appoint membership to a nine-person commission that will aid this Board of Supervisors in making those decisions around fire and rescue services. That's a long way in twenty-four months, and I'm pleased and proud that we've all been able to wade through that together. I will say that two weeks, two weeks, two Saturdays ago, I got to attend my first Cowans Festival, what a great opportunity to learn about the history of Pennsylvania County and see a lot of folks in a really great mood, super well attended, slightly versed day, and I just felt very thankful for being there, and as an Eagle Scout, I will say that the snipe hunt begins in ten minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Smithman, I do appreciate it. Mr. Squire? Okay. All right, during the.